Goodness, I will call the work session for Monday, February 3rd to order. First, city manager's report, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome.
Hey, guys. Welcome, thanks for coming.
Yeah.
Before we get into this, this is a work session. We're so happy you're here. But during the work session, we just kind of hash things out. There's an opportunity for community comment.
That's fine.
If you want, take notes, tell your friends to come next week.
Might be better back there, if you want to see the screen at all.
Oh, yeah.
I wanted to be staring at your screen.
You guys might have to...
Over this way. There you go.
Yo. But if you do have comments and want to share thoughts, stay until the meeting at 7:00.
Yes.
And like right at the very top of the meeting.
Perfect. Yeah, sounds good. Yep.
Yes, absolutely, yes. No, it's maybe you're here. You are locked in until 10:00 tonight. Okay. Sorry, Brent.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, got a couple of items to give you updates on. So, a project that's going to be making its way to the City Council is the... And you've seen kind of the land use side. An industrial development on the... In the northwest corner of Levi Griffin Road and Jonathan Carver Parkway. And as that project kind of gets off the ground, you're going to start seeing some finance-related pieces to that this spring. And in order to... I would offer to understand what you'll see as kind of a preview. I think it would help to understand how Levi Griffin Road was constructed. So, in 2011, Levi Griffin Road was constructed through what we call Chapter 429 or Special Assessment Process. Where the city constructs the improvements and then assesses out the cost of that project to the adjacent property owners. And so, that was done. But it was also kind of done in partnership. There was what's called the Tax Increment Financing District. So, tax increment financing, kind of a... Just a brief 101 on that is if a property is paying $10 in property taxes and it's vacant, and then you put a building on it, and all of a sudden, it's paying $100 in property taxes, that $90, that increment of difference can be collected over a certain amount of years. In this case, it's 10 years. That Fleet Farm had, so they were able to collect $90 of that new $100 towards their project. Connected with that, though, they got that increment, but they paid their assessment, the $2.3 million in full, because they own the north and south side of Levi Griffin where they're at. Then, the remaining parts of the assessment were deferred to the three other properties. All three of those properties are currently in Delkren Township. When they annex into the city, as the JCP Holdings property recently did, that assessment could come due. And so, we're building this concept for a City Council consideration, where there'd be a mix of payment of that assessment and some tax increment financing. One of the pieces that you'll hear as we get into tax increment financing and the consideration of that is the term "but for." So, could the development occur but for this tax increment or what a lot of folks call business subsidy? We're confident as a staff and communicating with the developer that the only way to get this kind of long dormant parcel, you know, as you can see, is sat vacant. Or, we probably thought at the time in 2011 it was going to develop within probably five years, that there was some impetus to get this project off the ground by providing some tax increment. And so, you'll get some of those details later. But ultimately, this is kind of the bedrock of that project. We're also seeking to use some of this tax increment to construct a signal light at the intersection of Commerce Drive and Levi Griffin Road. So, you can see right now, we've been paying about $125,000 in annual debt service on that project. And we have just under $2 million left till the debt matures in 2034. So, more to come. But it kind of... Since it's such a significant project, I kind of wanted to break it up into littler pieces, so that when you get kind of some of the action items, that it's not fresh out of the gate. We're also making arrangements for Tammy and Amdal and Jessica Green from Northland, who have been out here to review the basics of tax increment financing with the City Council. So, you can kind of go over that and then make your decisions as we go forward.
We need to remind you, Apodin is the one south of Lano on 212, right?
East of Lano.
Oh, so Lano doesn't go all the way up to 11?
No.
Okay.
Well, Apodin is about 8 to 10 acres, just kind of straddling Jonathan Carver Parkway. And then, Lano is the next piece. It's about 25 to 30 acres.
Okay.
Then, a couple of updates. Metropolitan mosquito control has offered to do kind of a presentation at your next work session, along with the Minnesota River Congress. That's the group that connected with the mayor. At your next work session, we'll also be presenting the Sheriff's Office Work Plan. That's not an item that you need to take action on. But if there are suggestions for revising that plan, it gets into, you know, areas you want to look for speeding and kind of relationship building pieces. We can take that feedback. Kind of a collection of work, primarily from the Engineers' Office, but also the City Attorney's Office is working on this as well. Working with HUD, so that's the group housing and urban development with the federal agent... The federal agency. So, this is money that we got from Congressman Emmer. And so, they're kind of the delivery system for those funds. And so, there's a memo of understanding to kind of get us through the process, primarily related to historic preservation and the state Historic Preservation Office visit of our project site that we'll be taking to the council on the 18th. Once we get through, I would say, I'd call it kind of the alphabet soup of the federal approvals, then the city can engage in the process to obtain permanent easements for the project, which will be a major milestone. So, we'll kind of walk you through each of those steps, but this is a pretty big step coming up on the 18th. And then, I sent out a meeting invite. And we can... We'll put this on the consent agenda to verify the date and get the council approval. But right now, we have kind of penciled in Wednesday, April 9th, for our evening Strategic Plan and Call Setting Session with the City Council. Phil Kern would be facilitating that. But a lot of the same things that you've seen previously, where we'd get kind of an environmental scan from each of the department heads on their kind of area of expertise, a review of our current strategic plan, and then opportunity... An opportunity for the council to make any changes and to establish some new goals and priorities for staff and the community for the next couple of years.
Brent, did you say evening?
Evening.
Okay.
Anywhere from probably three to four hours. So, I was tentatively planning like a start at 5:30, 6:00 type of time. So... And then, kind of one of the... Starting and kind of finishing with another pretty significant conversation that will be in front of the council throughout the year is delivering on the space study that Ortel is doing. So, we've been working as a committee, Paul Schultz, Eric Madigan, Craig Eldredge, Lynn Schutte and myself, for several months, updating the space study for the project. And so, this one, the council kind of had talked about this. There'll be some more data in the actual study. But we did this kind of work on our own. But I think it gives some line of sight to kind of what other communities are doing in the metro. There's kind of a mix of cities that are around our size, larger cities. I think that one of the interesting pieces is looking at the 2040 population and seeing how that aligns. And talking to the folks from like Willconia and Corcoran. Willconia is needing more space, and they disconstructed something in '08. Corcoran thought, when they built in 2013, that they'd have a building for 20 years, and they're full at 10. So, you can see some of the inertia is kind of... And gravity is pulling us probably toward a larger number. But again, when you're presented with information on this space study, it's a great opportunity for you to critique, ask questions, be critical. One of the things that we're doing kind of in advance is Lynn, Schutte and Paul Schultz are basically doing an audit of our equipment and vehicle inventory. We sent up... Sent them our list, and they've used that for their planning. But in order to kind of measure twice, cut once, we're kind of doing a physical audit. You know, are we still using this piece of equipment? Do we still have it? How does it fit within our rotation? And then, some additional, you know, background as we start thinking about it, the council starts looking at making decisions, and we start trying to communicate this out. You know, back in kind of the '60s, the old Charlie Mack Building was the Public Services or Public Works Building. The Fire Department was in the building down on Broadway. In the '80s, that location was moved to Lyons Park. There's about 2,000 square feet right now. The building inspection vehicles are housed in Lyons Park Garage along with some other kind of supply storage. And then, in 2003 was a pretty significant building and facility project. That's when the new fire station and Public Works Building was constructed on Jonathan Carver Parkway. And then, the old fire station down here on Broadway was given to the, what was called the Public Utilities Department at the time. You know, my kind of editorial comment, I think there was a big shift in kind of the trajectory of the community. In 2008, as you can see, the population was right around 1,500 in '03. But expanding 212 to four lane expressway in 2008 certainly changed kind of how people think and plan about this community. And so, you can see how our population has changed. And I think I would offer that the area in what... Yellow, Carver in 2045, like, that's the challenge for this council and the community of, you know, if you're going to build a facility, you know, do we have capacity to plan for a 20-year building? What does that look like from a cost perspective, from a space perspective? And kind of looking at all the options kind of in between from there. That's something that we're looking forward to getting the council started on that conversation in March.
Can I ask a question? Oh, please, go ahead. When they built the one in 2003, that was before our time here, how did they get the... Did they just purchase the land and build on? I know that was Mueller's property before.
Yeah, I don't have that level of detail at my fingertips.
And then, do you know if they just bonded for it? I mean, how did they pay for it?
I... From secondhand, I understand there was a couple of referendums.
Okay.
But then, yes, they bonded for it.
Okay.
The bond is paid off on that project, so that facility is painted in full.
Okay. Does anyone have eyes on trends in vehicle sizes?
That Ortel Architects is really great at that. So, they've done enough buildings. And one of the things, frankly, that they discovered in some of our past studies, is they... And I think I mentioned this at a previous work session. But they... You would think it'd be pretty easy to do, but our previous projects just planned for like the vehicle footprint. And they're looking at vehicle footprint press, like the doors open and the plow on. But I can tee that question up for them as well.
Yeah, because I'm just wondering, are like snowplows getting bigger? So, should we be factoring in...
Sure.
If we want this to be a 20-year building, should we be factoring in 20% additional space? Because snowplows are getting bigger, or salt trucks are getting bigger?
Right.
Or are they shrinking? Or like, what's the...
All electric fleet look like?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll...
There's snowplows, big snowplows, that'll be interesting. Big fire trucks.
Anyways, I was also going to ask, I saw in Corcoran that it said they didn't have room for locker rooms?
They didn't have... They don't have a locker.
They do not, right. But is that... I mean, is that something kind of standard in bigger cities? Is that they have locker rooms for their staff?
I would say anecdotally, yes, but I don't know for certain. I mean, they... I didn't include it on there, but they... He also put in his email, like they have one toilet for their staff. They don't have break room or offices. They do all... Kind of all that admin work at City Hall. But...
The reason I'm curious is if we are looking at a 20-year building, again, does... If that's something that is kind of standard in the industry, and I don't know why it is, but I just... If you noted on there that it wasn't part of it, why isn't it part of it? Should it be part of it? Is there a reason?
We have a lot... We don't have like a... Like, our locker room is kind of in like a space. It's not like a dedicated locker room right now. But that's where they keep like extra uniforms. There are times where they just get covered and stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
Something like change out, so...
So, maybe, is that a question then for the group that's coming? To ask them why that would be something that we would consider?
I'm not following.
Go back a slide. Sorry. Or another one. When... Who was coming to speak to us about this? There we go.
Ortel.
Ortel, thank you. So, I mean, is that something we should... I guess I would like to have maybe some staff input from Public Works or from Ortel about why or why not we would want to include the locker room.
They have that in...
Oh, it is in there?
Yeah.
We got there, Brent. It took a while.
Yes. So, the space that you'll see is a complete build. So, it's the vehicle and equipment storage, the office space, and like the, I would call it like the extra stuff.
Okay.
Not extra, but like the locker rooms, the bathrooms, dedicated maintenance bay, a wash bay, like the... You know, some communities will put the wash bay, you know, right inside like their storage area. But then, you know, the architects mentioned that can create kind of a moisture environment that you want to keep away from your vehicles related to rust and other corrosion pieces. So, but they can... They'll really do a deep dive on all that.
Okay.
But the... I would say what you will see is exactly what Paul Schultz, Eric Madigan and kind of the others have asked for.
Okay.
Called for best practices. One of the things you'll note that a lot of folks on the committee are getting a kick out of is they kind of reinforce the idea of Brent can participate, but doesn't get to make any decisions. I knew you'd appreciate that. And so...
Lot of map.
And rightly so, like, I can provide input, but I'm not in that business. I'm not in that industry. So, they're guiding best practices on how they would set up a facility. The decision-making on that ultimately comes down to you folks in the community.
Thank you.
And then, just, you know, we don't often do field trips down to the building, so I just wanted to kind of give you some perspectives. You know, we'll obviously kind of flush this out as our process goes. But, you know, one of the things that, you know, I'll point out that is unique to Carver, if you look at the bottom right-hand picture, you know, our facility is constructed like a fire station, but used for public works in that you see those multiple doors, where typically you'd see, you know, one or two doors with kind of an internal flow system. What that creates is like the... And this isn't kind of the full state, but you know, you'll see vehicles or skid steer or more parked in between. Or you'll have to kind of shimmy your way, you know, beside a truck to get to another truck. So, you know, our square footage of what we have is probably somewhat dictated by how efficient the team is in the use of our current space, and probably not this. So, I only say that because I, you know, when you start to see the numbers, it's... I think it's gonna, you know... For me, when I first started seeing some of the draft numbers, it was... I was surprised that the numbers were where they're at. Before I start talking about what those were, we want to make sure they're verified and look at our equipment and vehicle inventory. But I do think that we have a unique set of challenges. Every time we put up a plow on, it's a process rather than jumping in the truck and driving away with the plow on.
I can attest to that as staff back in the day when my office was up there. Even as tiny as the City of Carver was, all that happened was jockeying vehicles in and out, in and out, in and out to get what they needed, so...
And then, you can kind of see that. This is the old fire station or Public Utilities Building across from Getaway Motor Cafe. On the left is the brine baking machine that they use for ice control on the streets. But you can see kind of how we got things kind of parked in there to make it work. And then, there's frankly a process that probably takes the better part of a week at every season to kind of transfer vehicles from one spot to the other for... By seasons, you know, for street sweepers and lawn mowers and moving snowplows around to kind of make sure they can be as efficient as possible. Again, a big process. We want to be patient and precise with the communication, but there's some pretty big steps for your considerations. We're going to want to take one of the first bigger steps in March. So, that's all I have for updates.
All right. Council requests. I will start. I mentioned two weeks ago about kind of figuring out, talking about some of the upcoming lead of Minnesota Cities programming and who wants to do what. Natalie beat me to the punch a little bit with sending out an email about Day at the Hill. But first up is the Elected Leaders Institute. There is the advanced program. And then, I know Kayla's already signed up for the newly elected program, but just wanted to keep that on anybody's radar. The dates are February 21 and 22 in Plymouth. They're a Friday and a Saturday, and then 28th, February 28th and March 1st in Alexandria for them. Sorry, Kristy. Capitol Day on the Hill is March 6th. That's a Thursday. And then, the Annual Conference is in Duluth again this year. It was in Rochester last year. It will be June 25th through 27th, and that's a Wednesday through a Friday.
And I just... I did follow up with Dave this afternoon, misunderstanding that there may be some interest from multiple council members. And just asked them to share like how... What the mechanics of that would look like to try to get a quorum, if you will, of council members. And then, how can Dave explain that to the council?
Sure, Mayor and Council. So, for the Day at the Hill, you know, the way I understand it, part of it is kind of programming and program with panels and presentations. And I know the governor speaks and all that. That is something, of course, everyone can attend. And I don't think there's any reason for us to notice that as a quorum. I would just say if you go to those kinds of things where you're all sitting, listening to a program or presentation, that you don't sit by each other just to avoid any potential open meeting law issues if there's a quorum there. The second piece of that is I know there's an opportunity to meet directly with your legislators. I would say if you do that, you should not have a quorum there. If you're going to be talking about city business, city things with your legislators, it's just like, you know, the same reason three of you can't meet with me or with Brent outside of an open meeting because of the open meeting law. So, if you're thinking about doing it, I would encourage just two people to do that portion of it. And if more than a quorum wants to attend the larger program, that's fine. But just the one-on-one meetings or the smaller meetings, avoid. There's really no way to do it.
No conference?
The conferences are okay too.
Okay.
But again, I would encourage just the best practice. Whenever you're at those kinds of things, try not to be together as a quorum. It's just natural for everybody to talk about what you have in common, and you all have the City of Carver in common. So, you want to be pretty careful about how we do that.
Do we just say overtly, "Don't sit next to me"?
Well, I mean, you can sit next to one another. I just say it's such an easy thing to, you know, fall into as... You can go out and have coffee and dinner. All those things are okay, as long as you're not talking about official city business. But this whole meeting with the legisl... I mean, I assume the purpose of meeting with those legislators would be to talk about things that are important for the City of Carver.
Okay. So, with that, I am going to be going to the City Day on the Hill and the Annual Conference. And that sounds like I'm going to deal with it, but I'm going there as a man, but also on the... Part of my role on the Executive Committee, I believe, in Minnesota Cities. Who's the other person who wants to join me in St. Paul on March 6th?
So, I've already...
I believe Eric and I already both RSVP'd. Eric's welcome to take the other seat in the one-on-one meetings with the legislators if he wishes to do so, because you got your name in first, but...
Well, we can, you know, I... We can decide that. I declined the dinner afterwards.
I did too.
Okay.
I did as well. Okay. Okay. I'll leave it up to you guys. Okay. To decide that on your own, but let's do it before March 6th.
Yep.
Sounds good. And then, who is interested in the conference?
So, I'm interested, but I don't want somebody else not to go.
I am interested. And I don't know, like, if we have a budget for this?
We've... Yeah. We'll figure it out.
All right. I've been to a number of these, so I am happy to have maybe folks who haven't gone, go. So, I can kind of hang back and see what... I know the February things I can't go to. Okay. So, that is out for sure. Okay. When is... Sign up for the June one? They won't have... That's not even on their website yet. So, that won't be on their website until March. Okay. Generally, like they kind of launch it at Day at the Hill. Okay. So, March 6th-ish. Okay. So, who's going to March 6th? The three best.
Okay.
Perfect. Okay. All right. Well, just get in touch with Brent if anybody else is interested.
Well, Natalie's taking that. Natalie's really involved with that, so... I think the... I think we can accommodate multiple council members. Just the same rules would apply.
Yeah. At the conferences?
That's not all. Let's not have a Carver table if there's going to be more than two council members.
Sounds good.
Just looking at my calendar.
Okay. Okay. Let's see. I think we're removing item number four from the agenda.
Correct. The HOA is kind of put that project on hold for the time being.
Okay. All right. Item number five, Municipal Parking Lot Regulations. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. You've had a series of discussions related to parking regulations in municipal lots. Your current draft law then shows a restriction between the hours of 2:00 a.m. and 5:00 a.m., with the exception of the Broadway Lot and Third Street West Lot, which would be used to accommodate snow emergency parking and then the Riverside Lot for boot lounge parking. During your meeting on the 21st, you also asked the city engineer to look into kind of various parking requirements that are in the existing ordinance, kind of related to... Primarily related to Broadway and standards related to parking away from a hydrant or intersection, et cetera. So, Aaron Schmidt has provided some clarity on that. Generally, they identify state statutes and best practice safety standards. I did ask Paul Schultz as a follow-up as well related to the maintenance that's occurring on Broadway, primarily from Fourth to Main. I would offer that something that I didn't think of at the time, but the 2:00 a.m., the 6:00 a.m. primarily helps during the winter months. That's when the Public Services team does snow removal. So, we try to accommodate parking during the business day. So, when there is snow, rather than doing the curb-to-curb that we do with the rest of the community, we don't enforce that in the downtown. And then, after 2:00 a.m., that's when the team comes back in to do removals. Then, we also at least try weather and resource dependent to do one sweep of the downtown on a weekly basis. So, again, we're separating these issues out. So, a missile parking lot, then cul-de-sac regulations, and then finally, on-street parking regulations related to time limits as independent agenda items. So, right now, you are looking at just the... So right now, you are looking at just the parking lot regulations, so you have the draft ordinance, and then also the mark, the memo from Aaron Schmidt, city engineer, on just parking regulations. So happy to answer questions or sit back and let the council discuss.
I'm happy with the way this turned out. We had a lot of discussion on this, as we're still having on this, but I think this really outlines what we were looking for, and then also allowing for some of that snow emergency parking for some of our more parking-challenged homes in the downtown area. I think that's important. I also think it's important, as I said in the last meeting, for people who may have chosen to enjoy their recreational evening in downtown Carver, that they have chosen not to drive home. And then the boat launch, I think, is great. So I'm, for me, I don't see any changes in this that I'm looking for. The only little note I want to put on the side, that if we are going to use these as parking for the snow emergency, is that they are plowed out so that people can get in and out of them.
See that sort of.
So if we're using the parking lots for snow emergency down here, that they're not, that they're, they're passable, that people can get their vehicles off the main drag and into those parking lots for the snow events.
There'll be a little bit of a, to moving some pieces around, because if they're in there, it might be more difficult, but I'll pass that message.
Sure. But I mean, if we know that snow is coming, have a pass-through so that people can get it to the end.
Yes, okay. Yes, we can do that for sure.
Okay. That's all I have.
I like this too. You know, the one thing that I did think about after we talked last week, is I guess I wasn't thinking about all of the other parking downtown on kind of the side streets that aren't Broadway. For folks for the, you've had too much drink to drink, where do you leave your car? So, I was kind of rethinking the overnight parking being allowed just in general in the Broadway Lot and the Third Street West Lot, because if that is a, if it's a big drinking night and a snowy night, then it, I feel like it could potentially be a little bit overloaded. I counted and we have like, I think it's nine parking spots in the Third Street Lot, and there are, shoot, I wrote it down, it's like 20 spots in front of the Getaway Motor Cafe. So I just, I want to make sure that the folks who don't have anywhere else to go have priority, and I don't, and I don't necessarily envision the Third Street, either one of those lots, hopefully, being overrun with folks who've had too much to drink and decided to leave their car here for the night. But I just want to point that out. I think that, again, you guys hear me saying this all the time, that's not the hill that I'm going to die on tonight, but I think that's something that we should just kind of keep our feelers out there to kind of see how it goes, and maybe keep in mind that this isn't necessarily written in stone, and it's something maybe we could amend if it ends up being too much of an issue.
I will, as a downtown resident.
You live downtown?
I do. Yes. They, what I see is certainly cars are left on the side streets overnight. Again, it doesn't bother to me, they're usually gone or, you know, by noon the next day. And, but also, I think if, if someone is going to leave their car there and they get a ticket because they left it overnight during a snow emergency, because they were at one of the establishments, I mean, that's cheaper than the alternative, right? So I think that $50 is a lot better than 15 grand. So, to me, I haven't seen that there's been a whole lot of trouble with them, like, overlapping and not being able to find a spot down by the getaway because there's been too many cars overnight, or that, you know, the street parking is taking over. I don't see it as being a problem right now. I mean, certainly something you can kind of take, keep an eye on.
Yeah.
I just, I don't, I don't think it's going to be that big of a.
It's, it's not a huge concern of mine, I just wanted to point it out, and Lord knows it hasn't snowed in the last few winters. Maybe it's a jinx, because I would love to see a little bit more snow. No, this is the one that I do want to jinx. Snow, snow, no, there's been no snow.
Yeah.
Let that be the jinx, so. Any other thoughts?
Well, this is sound like a cop-out, but I am happy that Kristy is happy. Well, in, in that, I think you have a really good bead on the needs of people downtown and what the parking situation is. So, I really did kind of look to you to have your assessment of this. So, I am happy if you are happy.
I think this will work nicely, and I think it will alleviate some of the problems, again, of some of our parking challenge. We don't have, we have some, we don't have a ton, but we do certainly have some. And I think being able to, the snow emergency part of this, it's going to be really important for them to be able to move their cars to a place where they won't get a ticket.
And then the plows can come through, and once it's clear, you're back.
I am assuming that the, a snow emergency situation will be subsumed under the permission given ahead of time by the city manager language, because there's nothing in here that specifically calls out the snow emergency allowance of parking?
Can I take that?
Yeah, it's more of a you question.
Yeah, we, we removed that and just made overnight parking available at all times in those three lots, including the Riverside Lot.
And those were the ones we were talking about for snow emergencies?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Yep, so.
That's just what I wanted to clarify.
All right, um, I think we're good to go on that one. All right, look at us move right on. Cul-de-sacs. Let's talk about how to appropriately park in a cul-de-sac.
Yeah, so this is an item that's come up since your last meeting. We got some feedback from a resident, and I thought we had a gap in the ordinance, so I connected with the city attorney. And so we have some language essentially that is depicted in the council packet or in the memo that just kind of reinforces for use of enforcement from the sheriff's office, that if, when parking in a cul-de-sac, that the driver's side, or, excuse me, passenger side tires need to be parked adjacent to the curb. So, that would prohibit parking in the center of the cul-de-sac, bulb, double parking next to a vehicle that's already parallel parked against the curb, or parking at a 90 degrees at the curb. And so, that's kind of how the ordinance is written, so the draft was prepared by the city attorney. Happy to answer any questions or listen to council discussion on the matter.
I have a concern.
Go ahead.
So, Carver Creek Place has a center island in the cul-de-sac. If a car is parked with the wheels on the curb, you would potentially make it not possible for a truck to get around that cul-de-sac. Is there some language in here that leaves a certain amount of distance, a passable length?
Does it call out in the sign that says no parking right now, or is it just?
No.
The neighbors just don't because they're, or they do park there?
They generally don't, but occasionally they have.
Okay.
And it's an inconvenience, but it could be a real problem for a fire truck, because, because of those center islands.
That feels like an area that needs to be signed.
To me, this wouldn't exacerbate that problem. I think the only way to address that issue is to have a separate provision that said, says, you know, in the cul-de-sac on Carver Creek Place, for example, there's no parking, just like we have certain areas in the city where we already say there's no street parking because of the, how narrow those roadways. If you are serious that if somebody parks against the curb in that cul-de-sac, you might not be able to get fire trucks in there, that's a big deal.
Yeah. An articulated truck would be, you know, with a 40, not that we get too many of them, but they come down not knowing that they can't get around if there's a car parked there.
But ambulances are more of a width too than a normal vehicle. I mean, we.
And especially in the winter, if the road hasn't been plowed, there's a problem there. And there, I think there may be one other cul-de-sac in the neighborhood that has an island.
Oh, sure it does.
Yeah?
Carver Creek Circle also has an island.
So, but that is an issue.
So we get a city engineer to review, and if signage is appropriate, that'll follow our sign policy process to install signs.
Do we have to include the language into the ordinance then?
I think we already have language about any areas that are signed as no parking can't be, it might require a resolution back to the council just to identify those areas as no parking. That might be what the ordinance is. It's been a while since we looked at that, but Brent, maybe you.
Yeah, you have called that. The council adopted a sign review process that essentially delegates that authority to the city engineer after review. We notify residents of the signage change. It doesn't come back to the council.
Okay.
But I share out the message to the council or the action. So we've done that in a couple cases where we've added a stop, we've added some stop signs, and I think a couple locations throughout the community. It's based on engineering standards, so there's really not a lot of, it's all based on, I would say, engineering standards, so there's no discretion in it other than what the numbers show.
Eric, just out of curiosity, how many driveways once you get to that cul-de-sac would you say you have?
Would be impacted one, two, three, four, four driveways.
Okay. The question that I have is you have the state statutes in here, why do we need to have an ordinance for it?
Here's, here's the issue with the statute, Mayor. It's a good question. So Brent and I talked a little bit about that, but the language in the statute here talks about parking on a two-way roadway. To me, it's a little ambiguous how that applies to a cul-de-sac. I mean, I understand, a cul-de-sac is sort of its own thing, right? It's an area where a lot of people use it to turn around, it's the bulb. There's not really an identifiable two-way lane within that, and so I think it would be hard, or at least arguable for, it'd be tough to have, issue a ticket for somebody who isn't appropriately parked under the statute, and I think the sheriff's office would agree. And so, clarifying that in cul-de-sacs, we have a rule where you have to have both those passenger-side tires right up against the curb is the way to make it crystal clear for people, and the sheriff would appreciate that, and I think they would then be able to say, well, maybe we think there's a little bit of ambiguity with the statutory language, let's just cite them under the city ordinance.
Okay.
So, I'll be honest, I mean, I didn't, I didn't write this language in the ordinance. I found it because other communities have used it.
Okay.
And so I think they probably had the same issue come up or predicament where they wanted this language, and it's worked, so.
Okay. And then my only other question is, because we have a language in here that says the two passenger-side wheels, that solves the issue of if somebody is halfway in their driveway and halfway sticking out?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
In a cul-de-sac.
What do you mean by, in a cul-de-sac? So, if this is the driveway, the front tires are here, but the back of the truck.
Oh, hanging out in the cul-de-sac.
Okay, I was thinking. This is the driveway, these are the front tires. Stop it. This is the back of the truck.
Yeah. I thought you meant that they were hanging over into their own driveway. I was like, why would we care?
Draw a car, okay, thank you. Questions, comments?
I think it's a good ordinance.
I feel like this is the easy one, guys, let's go. Okay, thank you, Kayla. Lori?
I think it's a good ordinance.
Okay. Kristy? I have, no comment. Okay. All right, so let's, all right, I think we can move forward with this one.
Okay.
Next, on street parking regulations, Mr. Merrick.
So again, the council's had a series of conversations related to length of time a vehicle may be parked on a public street. I did add language, we haven't previously discussed it, or at least recently. The city does have a global restriction related to campers, camper trailers, unhitched trailers, that can't be parked on a city street for more than 48 consecutive hours, so I just wanted to provide a line of sight. The councils, as you know, you've had conversations along a spectrum of 72 hours or three days to 168 hours in seven days. Some additional research that we did, we did an area view of municipal parking regulations, so Chaska Chan, Victoria, and Waconia, there's all sorts of different parking regulations that you can come up with. We did, in consulting with the city attorney, did talk a little bit about some various pieces. There's some parking, I can't remember if it's area or if it was from another city, but familial status, I think it's a little, this is editorial comment, it's a little dicey about how to like verify someone's status and relationship. And then work trucks, I think the definition, again, another editorial comment, is critical there, because what is a definition of a work truck? If you put a logo on a truck or a ladder, is that a work truck on a van or a pickup or a sedan? I only offer that in, you know, ordinances are somewhat easy to adopt, they're, you know, abundantly harder to enforce, and so just trying to put the sheriff's office in a position where they can enforce it and then hopefully meet expectations of the community or the neighborhoods that are impacted by these situations. One of the things frankly that I learned just in the last week from the sheriff, the sheriff's been very supportive, but he offered, and I'm sure Dave knows this already, but there was a court case somewhat recently that made it illegal for the sheriff's office to chop tires, because they're essentially kind of touching someone's property. So what they can do now is chop around the tires, but not actually the tire. But it, it does.
Yeah, no, I get that. I'm just.
It does show kind of the specificity that kind of goes along with this, and, you know, one of the things that we discussed was that routinely, if you park on the street and you leave to go to work, and the street is kind of where you typically park, you end up kind of parking in the same spot. And he used kind of a, an anecdote from, you know, when he was younger and was visiting a friend, and he, he could tell where he parked because there was an oil spot in that same spot. And so, I only offer that, that there are obviously some ordinances that you can adopt that will likely motivate people to not park for whatever extended period you think is detrimental to the kind of well-being of the community or a neighborhood. But I would also offer that an ordinance like this, if there's a specific issue, will undoubtedly not probably solve all the way that specific issue, that it will probably take a combination of ordinance language and conversations amongst neighbors about, hey, you parked this vehicle in my blind spot, could you put it in the driveway? You know, because after talking about it with colleagues, the city attorney, the sheriff's office, I'm not confident there is a, you know, the council used the term kind of unintentionally, but like, is there a perfect solution to this? Like, I don't know if there's like a way that remedies some of the example situations that I have seen personally in this community. It probably involves a combination of things, but I think, I would offer again editorially that having some stopgap of like, if you park your vehicle on the street and don't move it for this amount of time, that constitutes an issue, and here's why, and having that standard. And right now, we don't have a standard, so I would offer that there's probably space to do that. With that, I'll leave it open to questions or, and council discussion.
Do you want to start us off? It's right here, let's go.
Sure. So, again, I think my first reaction to this entire conversation was surprised that we did not have a city ordinance in place already. I just assumed that the sheriff or the city could take action if needed with somebody parked for an inordinate amount of time or was causing a nuisance. So, I think there should be a time limit, we're going to come to a decision on that. I'm fine with 72 hours. I was also amenable to a longer period of time. I think that folks, we need to communicate that this is to give the city a mechanism of enforcement, it is not the parking police with a charge to come after you at 73 hours. I don't think that's anyone's intent or the desire of the city, but we have no mechanism of enforcement now, and that is a problem. Looking through some of the languages of the other cities, seems to get a little overly complex, the familial connection in parking. As you said, I don't know how you would enforce that either. So, I'm for a timed enforcement. I think 72 hours is sufficient. We're not going to chase people, we're not necessarily going to chase people at 73 hours, it's just as a mechanism to allow us to do so. If we want to discuss up to a week, I, I think I'm amenable to that as well. That's it.
I don't know, did you watch the meeting last time? My concern with the time limit is, and I said this two weeks ago, is I am thinking that for whatever we decide, it will effectively be twice that amount. We decide 24 hours, it'll effectively be 24 hours. If we decide three days, it'll effectively be six or seven days, and here's why. They think, if after I see Brent's car parked out in front of somebody's house for three days, I'm going to call the sheriff's department. The sheriff's department is not going to take my word for it and be like, we will write Mr. Merrick a ticket, no problem, we'll get that taken care of. They're going to wait. They're going to wait three more days to see if it moves. So I think that whatever we decide, we really have to keep that in mind. The other thing, and we talked about this two weeks ago too, is this is not going to be something that I want to see our deputies proactively enforcing because there's other things that they should be doing. Nor do I think that they patrol our streets with a level of detail of, oh, there are three houses and, or three cars in front of Courtney's house tonight and last night and the night before. You know, like, that's just not something.
They're coming back tomorrow.
Their radar, you know? Like, I don't think they're keeping track of that kind of thing. I share your opinion that the familial relationships, and I think in some of the emails that we've received from residents, the ideas to distinguish between owners and renters is just icky. And I don't think that the city has a role in like, how are we going to do that? Are we going to send somebody around with a clipboard and say like, hi? How many people are in your house and who drives what? And okay, who's going to be here tomorrow? That just is so icky, like big government. No, no, thank you. You know, our last meeting, also heard a suggestion for parking permits on the street. I think that would go over like a lead balloon to our residents to have to charge them to pay in their suburban neighborhoods, be it up on the hill or downtown or in the bluffs. I just don't think it's going to go over really well. And then the other thing that I read in some of the example ordinances, which, by the way, thank you for turning around that so quickly. I think we had that by noon for sure the next day, was, yeah, the familial and the number of cars per house. Like, just that like minutia level of regulation just feels like big government to me, which feels really, really gross. Those are my thoughts for now.
So just to clarify then, whatever, you're not saying, you're not proposing a time limit. You're just saying, consider that whatever time limit we propose is going to have an extension by way of the mechanism of enforcement.
Yeah. Yeah, and I would be with that, kind of looking at our neighboring communities from the information that Brent said. Chan, Chaska, Chan and Chaska look like they're 48 hours. I couldn't tell from Victoria's ordinance what they, what their hour amount was. Waconia was 24 hours and Shakopee was 24 hours. I think that if we said 72, which I think we need to write out and have say three days because that gets to be a little bit of math. But I think if we did 72 hours or three days, I think that that is clearly more generous than those four examples I just cited.
Understood, okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. So I agree with the familial status. Originally, I thought, well, that seems great, right? Like, that seems very typical. It's my house, I want to park in front of it. But then that's only if you know the people. So how do you, who's a partner? Who's a sister? Who's an aunt? Who has a different last name? Are we drawing family trees now? How are we proving this? You know, and I, I really, really feel that if you are parked in front of your own house, people are not going to have a huge issue with it, right? What it is, is the issues I feel like we've heard have been outside of someone parking in front of their own residence. So I don't see that as being something that is going to, you know, the neighbors are going to be calling their neighbor parked in front of their own house. When looking at the summary of the regulations that you sent, thank you for sending the surrounding communities because I think it was good to see what Chan, Chaska, Victoria, Waconia had. I find these to be incredibly restrictive and really in excess of trying to go through them. I mean, trying to, as a resident, to look through this long ordinance of every single nuance that's in them, it seems overkill to me. I do like that our ordinance is short and sweet and it says just what it is. And I don't have, as you were saying, I don't have kind of any appetite to be running around, you know, asking statuses of families and, and having whether you have four cars because if you have that many kids who are driving and two adults, I don't, that's not my business. I also think parking permits for long-term are not desirable. This, they are public streets. So to issue someone, I can understand that short-term, if there's, if you're having construction materials dropped off or whatever that might be, but to have a long-term permit on a public street, you are now, you are now laying claim to something that belongs to the community as a whole. And I don't think that's appropriate either. I also see this ordinance as a reactive ordinance. I have no want to spend our police resources driving around checking cars that have not become a nuisance. This is supposed to be the nuisance ordinance for cars and vehicles that have become a nuisance. We have a lot of correspondence from Lorraine Court about some of their nuisance, nuisance issues there. Those are even outside of this. So I'm not going to, you know, talk about that with this one because I think that lands outside of what this is about. This in no way says that you can't park in front of your house, that you can't park for multiple days over the weekend. I am also open to, as Eric is, the amount of time. I'm 72, seems fine. Again, as Courtney was saying, they're not just going to take your word for it. The cop at the most would probably call the owner of the vehicle and talk to them and, you know, go down and make, you know, whatever notes they do about a car. But again, it was, it's going to be that length of time after because they're not just going to take your word for it that Joe down the street called and said it was three days, so it must have been three days. So I'm really good with the short and sweet ordinance as written. Again, I'm hoping to the rest of the council on the timeframe.
Brent, could you clarify? Have we had complaints from people parking outside of their own property?
They have, but the complaints that I received are probably a mix. Recently, and I don't, when I, you know, when I, I've driven down like, for example, like Lorraine Court, I don't know whose vehicle is whose vehicle, but I do know, I used to live kind of adjacent to that neighborhood. And I do know one of the families and the vehicles that they were talking to me about are not, are parked on the other side of the street or not in like.
Opposite their own property.
I don't think that.
The completant, the vehicles are parked opposite the completants.
Correct.
Okay.
I do just kind of, I would say, offering to paraphrase. I would say that the concern from them is the backing up and then that like vehicle is kind of always in like the spot that has their attorney like doing the backup that it's kind of like in the way. But I haven't received in quite a bit of time, a complaint that someone is parking in front of their property or their property adjacent. It's, it's primarily been related to, you know, across the street or parking some of the stuff related to like the cul-de-sac stuff that we previously discussed. But nothing related to like, someone's got their truck parked right in front of my picture window that hasn't come home.
Okay. Well, my concerns are, I want to be governing in the assumption that this is going to be the exact amount of time that we say it's going to be because just like we assume that we're going to be good people and good neighbors and not report our neighbors until they've been parked outside our property for three days. If you're having a beef with a neighbor, you could report them immediately. And so we can't build in this idea that we're going to have selective enforcement or delayed enforcement in these time periods, in my opinion, because of that. Because we know that a lot of times these things come up in neighbor-to-neighbor disputes. So I'm kind of concerned about building in that buffer, knowing, you know, it's going to take twice as long because we're going to have, there are going to be cases of what I like to call malicious enforcement.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
But I think my point in bringing that up is I think that it's, I'm going to assume positive intent and not assume that the second you walk away from your car, if it's parked in front of my house, I'm going to be on the phone. I think it's just something that we should consider when determining that time period. Because I think very likely, if you go by the book, it will be, and that's going to be part probably of the communication process of like, I'm not going to be able to call after three days and expect immediate resolution.
Yeah. Well, and it, but in all due respect, the arguments that have been made toward the council about why we need this ordinance have been assuming malicious intent on the person that is parking.
Can I, can I ask you? Okay, so I see what you're saying, but let's say Joe doesn't like Bob, right? So Joe calls and says, Bob's been parked there for three days, but Bob's only been parked there for one day. Well, when the officer, if the officer does come and has some, he can say, no, I wasn't. And then you could still even have three days, that would be the correct amount of time. So even if it was called in maliciously and the officer was there to check it out, Bob has the right to say, no, that is incorrect. And the officer then would have to say, well, okay, I'll be back in three days. And if it's still there in 72 hours, then they actually have broken the ordinance.
Yeah, and that's what I'm, and I agree with you. But what I'm saying is that if we're building in, if we're building our chosen time period based on the idea that it's going to be double what we pick, we shouldn't be making that assumption because of the issue of malicious enforcement.
Yes, but the ordinance will be 72 hours or three days or however many days. That's what the rule will be. I'm saying food for thought.
Okay, and I'm countering that food for thought with other food for thought. So just bringing that up as well. I think that this ordinance is important in order to allow us to deal with abandoned vehicles in the city. To that end, I would like to see it at a longer time period. I'm comfortable with a minimum of 10 days. Just because I don't, and we've talked about this before and I'm kind of beating a dead horse at this point, but I don't think that what we're trying to attempt to do with this ordinance is going to be addressed within this way. I think that what this ordinance is going to end up being good for is for the removal of abandoned vehicles. And so I want to see it at a longer time period. And that's my opinion. Lori?
A couple of questions. Can I, Kayla, can I just ask you?
Yeah.
So when we're being asked to insert the limitation of time, you would prefer 10 days?
Yes.
I, thank you for giving the information fast and I really like that this ordinance draft is one page, almost less than one page. So I have a like process question and knowing that something like this would give us the tool to enforce it, how would a resident do that? Like, what is the best way? Do they call City Hall? Do they submit form? Do they call the non-emergency member of the sheriff's office? What will we educate them?
Yeah, that would be the, the best. We would offer that they would report it via the Carver Coney, Non-Emergencies.
Okay.
Carver Funny Dispatch. Or like, you know, we'll likely get calls, but that would be their message to our team is to do that.
Okay. All right. Thanks for answering that. Yeah, I'm completely in favor. I am quite, pretty open on a range of the date frame. I can go and, I am comfortable going anywhere from, knowing that I'm just one ways, from 72 hours to three days to 10 days. I wouldn't want to say less than three days, but.
All right, bye.
Can I interject one?
Please.
So the, this is a kind of a process question for the council. So my initial intention was to put this on for the first meeting in March so that we, whatever the ordinance you're proposing, whatever that kind of essential language is, we can put it in the newsletter to make sure that we're getting the most eyeballs on it. You can either choose to say that you're considering, and we can leave it blank. I would offer that, you know, you're providing, you'd be providing, although you would be taking a final vote if I, or if we could say the proposed ordinance says this, because that will, I would say, impact the amount of people and to what degree they advocate for their position, whether it's three days, 10 days, or 30 days, or somewhere in between. So we'll, you know, we'll use our same kind of agenda guide and city council rundown to inform. But as you probably, hopefully agree, the newsletter is probably our most influential communication tool because everyone sees it. You don't have to kind of go preemptively to the website or social media to find it or this is mailed to folks. So that, that said, you don't have to reach compromise or consensus tonight. We'll just leave it blank and can say that there's a range that'll be considered. But if you have consensus on a, what you want in a proposed ordinance, we can have it and you can still debate it at your meeting. I think it's March, that is the first meeting in March.
I kind of think we need to say something so that we can get feedback on it, even if we're all not 100% there. And I mean, it's, it's my preference, but I would advocate for it to be three days. And I would go to seven.
So, you know, the, the point about it taking a longer period of time. Boy, if we went to 10 days and then we add 10 days on, that's going to generate calls to the city. Hey, why didn't you guys do anything about this?
It's been three weeks. Why haven't you?
Yeah, so I, I can't go as far as that. I, I agree that, you know, we are reactive in how we're going to enforce this. And I, I tend not to believe there's going to be a lot of malicious intent on our residents against another. That may happen. I think more than likely, someone is only going to call. It's been a lot more than three days. Yeah, and we're, it's not as though we're dealing with a, a big problem. I think we're dealing more with oversight that we didn't have an ordinance to start with. I would, I was, I was actually leaning more to, to go a few more days, but knowing the response time and factoring that in, you know, I, I'm, I'm closer. And also seeing that other cities are 24 or 48 hours, we're already being more lenient at 72. But I'm not going to die on that, so.
I just, I agree. I think 10 is for me is just a pair too long.
Yeah.
I can be just fine going out to seven. That works fine for me. But that's my, that's my opinion.
I'd prefer 72. Maybe I'd like to publish that and see what the, the result is. But if there was a ground swell.
We're going to stand you up there with a pitchforks.
Yeah, if there's a ground swell, it's got to be four days or five days. It's, it's not worth much more debate on it. But 10 days is going to cause, I think, more of a problem and perception that we didn't do something about it.
Do you have any thoughts?
I have a strong appetite for that seven. It was up for a little compromise of five. And again, for what we publish of that we're considering to get feedback.
And then, yeah. Kayla, are you willing to go out to seven though? Or are you? I, I know you did, but we've got a seven, seven. We've got a three. Three.
Uh, no, I'm, I'm all about compromise.
If we, if we publish seven and see what feedback we have, it's something that I would consider.
I think we have a majority of seven. I don't like it. I think that's too long. It almost feels like, for an ordinance, we're a little iffy on like the workarounds. It just feels like there's no reason for seven days.
You didn't, Kristi, are you okay with five?
I don't know. Okay, well, I don't, you know, I didn't consider five. That's the first thing, I mean, I guess I didn't think of five as even being.
I really do worry about the response time perception. Because if we're going to add extra days and then we're adding extra days for a sheriff to, we've gotten to the point, we have an angry resident and now we've got to engage somebody to measure five days. You know, we look unresponsive if we go too long. And we are unresponsive if we go that long.
So you're considering five, you're considering five.
I'm negotiating a right five, yeah.
I'm going from, I, I was happy with three. Now taking into account Courtney's argument for this extension, I think five seems like a reasonable amount of time.
And if the council doesn't feel comfortable, we can put, you know, three, five, seven.
I'd like to.
No, this is our job.
We're negotiating here.
This is our job. We need to be able to come to an agreement. We have, this is the third time we've discussed this. You guys, it's just a number to go on the newsletter. We don't have to be like, this doesn't have to, this is not the final number. This is what we're going to use to solicit feedback and to get resident engagement so that folks can opine and share their opinions with us.
Are you doing that with your eyebrows?
Not.
Lori, you have, like, are you thinking anything else? No, I, I just like a soft number up there, you know, that we're considering and then get the feedback.
Which is? Five, I think I heard you say. Thank you.
Five, because I know.
Five, because I know the process takes time.
Zero.
No.
Six and a half.
Okay, this is silly and this is weak. You guys, as the leaders in our community, this is the third time we've talked about it.
Yeah.
Okay, so we will print that we are considering five days.
We now have a majority of five, so.
And that, that will be the measuring stick that we use to get feedback from our residents to see what they think and to have them opine. And that will take place at our next meeting, which is March 30.
Two meetings from now.
Oh, right. Two meetings from now so that we can get it in the March newsletter.
Correct.
We'll do social media on it. Are you going to bill it as a listening session or is it just going to be a comment? We're going to be talking about it. This is the time to opine.
You can do it either way.
One point of clarification, I'm sorry. You did say we have an ordinance against like a large commercial vehicle already parked down the street. So if somebody parks their 40-foot RV?
RV, not a, not a commercial like.
But an 40-foot RV down the street, there's already.
There's something for, yeah, self-propelled campers, camper trailers, not hitch trailers. But I would offer, I mean, there have been any number of suggestions related to like, you know, parking with a pickup truck and a trailer attached and, you know, computations after that of restrictions, so you know, it depends on how much you want to restrict it to what degree.
I don't want to get into a multi-page ordinance like our neighbor said.
Can we put a panel up for just a quick second?
Yep.
Because I'm not confident we're 100% in five days.
Did you say five days?
Yes.
I meant it?
I would say that if you're.
I meant it, yeah.
And Eric did and you did and that is your majority.
Okay.
If you're going to do a listening session, I would offer that you don't need a timeframe. If you're going to consider taking action, then you should.
I think we should take, yes, respectfully, I think we should take action. I think we've had this on the agenda a number of times. We've solicited feedback in a number of ways. We've had residents who have come in. So I think that it should go to the next council meeting, not starting off in March. And residents will again have the time then to comment and we can discuss and consider feedback at that time, too.
And if you're not ready to make a decision on that, not that you would want to.
For our fifth meeting?
But you could table it on.
There's always options.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Madison, anything known to state?
No, well, I, I think the direction is that staff will have that ordinance ready to be adopted if the council, three members of the, it takes three to adopt an ordinance, wants to adopt it. And, you know, I'll let the council decide, mostly the mayor decide how to solicit feedback, but.
One last question. So if somebody, and I know we don't need a public hearing, but if somebody asks me, well, why wasn't there a public hearing, Mrs. Sayer? What do I say?
You would say, or I would offer that you'd say a public hearing is not required, but effectively the, the culture here in Carver is that the council takes feedback from residents on issues, so then that effect is like, other than like an official notice in a newspaper, which goes to the Wacoia Patriot, the result is.
But I guess we should have asked, it's not required because it's not a zoning change. It's not, I'm looking at Aaron, like it's, okay.
But the, the way that we're going to be publishing it, the net effect is the same. They're going to be glorified and.
Yes, I like, we're giving up time, too.
And I would, just because of kind of the bucket of ordinances that you're looking at, we would put all of that into space for municipal parking, cul-de-sac and on-street all in March 30th meeting so that we can do kind of one notice.
Got it. We're all okay with that? Yes, okay. Your question, sorry.
I don't remember what it was anymore.
Truck, the trailer and sign restrictions.
It's already been addressed.
Okay. All right. Sign regulations.
Do you want to start?
Do you want to start?
You are the leader of this pack.
I half would feel like this is going to be, requires more than seven minutes.
There's 30, please, slides.
Let's talk about commission interview process, if that's okay. Sorry. This is good. I think I'm okay.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We are approaching the renewal for commission interviews. And so I just wanted to come before you and ask for your feedback regarding the process that we're following. I'm relatively new to the process, but I think this, a series of questions that have been asked in the process has been followed for many years. So I feel like it's a good opportunity to come here tonight and see if there's any feedback you have or if you're requesting any changes. So as you know, the city has two commissions, the Heritage Preservation Commission and the Planning Commission. Both of them are served by volunteer Carver residents. And interested residents and current commissioners with expiring terms are required to submit an application and a letter of interest. Appointments are then made to the three-year terms following an interview with the city council. So this year we have our commission interviews tentatively scheduled for February 24th. And we're just looking for feedback regarding the questions that we're asking on the interview, during the interviews, and then also going forward if there's any process changes you'd like made. For a little history, our interview timeframes for the Heritage Preservation Commission have been five minutes in length and the Planning Commission have been 10 minutes in length. For another perspective, we have three positions, I'm sorry, three positions on the Heritage Preservation Commission. This year we have three applicants for those three positions. And then for the Planning Commission, there are two board member positions that are open and we have nine applicants for that.
So for the HPC, as liaison to that, I, you know, five minutes, I feel like we're really rushing them. Now, our questions aren't as, we don't have as many and it's not quite as in-depth as the Planning Commission interview, but I would like to allow up to 10 minutes for them, knowing they could get done early, but I really feel like we're just kind of like, hey, nice to meet you, hustle, and they're out the door. I would, I think five minutes is just a little bit short for that.
I'm fine with expanding that. I don't know that I've felt that stress, but could we tell, just in case that's too much time, could we tell applicants to get here 15 minutes ahead of time so that we can potentially take folks earlier if we are able? I'm fine with the questions. They've been very standard for what we've asked. I think that they're fair and not like, what does page seven of the long-term, of the design Carver plan say? Like I think.
Do you think it's a planning commission, 10 minutes sufficient for you, Aaron?
I think there are too many questions.
Okay.
Nine questions in 10 minutes when they have like, tell us a little bit about yourself is a lot.
Do you see any that, and I'm also not the past liaison for this, so past liaisons and you, Aaron, do you see any questions that you think might not be as relevant as others?
Or we could combine a couple, I think. But yeah, like seven and eight, I think get to the same root. So it's what uses would you not want to see in Carver? And how many people are too many people in Carver? I think the goal of both of those is seeing how comfortable they are with growth. So I think that could.
So can we rework that? Because I think, I think the question, how many people is too many is, I mean, I know why we say it because I've heard the answers, but it just, it feels a little, it's a negative connotation to that question and I think there's a way that we can get to some, what we're looking for by combining that into something that's a little bit better worded.
Well, you could just ask what the right size population is. Can we add five minutes if we don't have enough time for nine questions?
Reminder that there are nine applicants.
Plus the additional three.
Yeah, but I get that, but it's also our job to give everyone time and give us time to, to make the best decision we can. I'm not, we don't do it very often, so.
I'm okay with giving them more time. I do remember feeling a little bit more time crunch for the Planning Commission interviews.
Yeah.
But, you know, like Dave has been really clear that we don't ask the question at the end, like do you have any other questions, because we can't. And we need to like keep this consistent for everybody.
Inevitably, someone will take all 15 minutes.
Right.
Yeah, so welcome to save a little time there. Actually, if we're going to change the wording, I still want a question about population because it drives some important answers.
Then when we look at, at the questions, what about five? Because it's talking about a larger review of city parks. I think that was very, I think that was very pointed to that timeframe that we were in, so maybe that is the one we remove, if that is okay. Because that's not quite as relevant as the last time we went through these interviews.
That's my Studding Hill question. You remember when I was on?
I do, I do. So I think that, I really do think that the number five just isn't as relevant for right now. And maybe the, keeping the, however the population is worded.
I think we could rework seven and eight to make them not seem negative, too.
Okay. I, I hear what you're saying about it being a snapshot in time when we kind of combine parks and planning. I do like hearing the like opinion.
I don't think it's relevant, as relevant to the rest of the Planning Commission interview questions and what we're doing right now.
No, but these are three-year terms. And if we're going to make them 15 minutes, we can easily get through these in 15 minutes.
So I was not advocating to move into 15 minutes. I was thinking that we would remain at 10 and that's why we would possibly take out a question and revamp that one into one.
I'm okay with, I don't know, I don't feel super strongly on that. I, but I kind of.
Do you think 15 minutes, sorry?
Yeah, no, I do kind of feel like 15 minutes would be good. And like tell people to get here early because, boy, Brenda, was it you last time? There was somebody who canceled and we had to do last-minute shuffling and, you know, like I'm 15 minutes early, maybe keep your cell phone on you because it can be a little fluid.
I mean, if the rest of the council thinks that if we go 15 minutes and leaving five in there, or is there more, is there a different question that could go in its place that is maybe more relevant to today than the parks? I don't know.
Well, then we're just replacing the question.
But that's longer time, yeah. I was thinking it 10 minutes, no.
I like the questions. I think we give ourselves the breathing room and the courtesy of 15 minutes. Not all we use it.
Okay.
That's okay, 15 minutes?
I'm okay with 15, okay. 15 minutes. We, am I hearing this that we're going to keep question five?
Yes.
But we are going to try to either merge seven and eight, but either way make them a little bit more hesitant.
Yeah.
Not so like, what are we going to outlaw?
Well, yeah, like.
Who are we going to uninvite?
Who have we closed off to? And don't want to get.
Don't say one number.
Okay. All right, well, look at that. You're right on the line. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
A motion by Kershman, second by Mock, all those members say aye.
Aye.
All the same side, motion passes. All right, we uphold sign regulations.